Good morning and welcome to the June 14th County Board Meeting. Roll call would show all Commissioners are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty just as strong.
Okay, our first item is to approve the agenda. Everyone should have a chance to look at the agenda. I don't think there's any additions to the agenda that I see, anyway.
Move the agenda, approval of the agenda?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Our next item is Public Access Forum. Is there anyone here today wishing to speak at the Public Access Forum? If so, you may come up to the microphone. You'll have three to four minutes. State your name and address, and the Board will not enter into any dialogue, but take your comments under consideration. Good morning.
Good morning. 21417 Forest Hill Road, Richmond, Minnesota. And I'm here this morning to discuss short-term vacation rentals. There's a few points I'd like to discuss. Short-term vacation rentals are transparent by nature, are transient by nature, rather, and typically unsupervised resorts put into our neighborhoods. I've been to a few of the Planning Commission meetings where we've discussed permits for the interim use permits for STVRs, short-term vacation rentals. And typically, the discussion by the Plan Committee has been around tourism. What I don't hear is addressing the other pillars in the comprehensive plan. For instance, there doesn't seem to be any consideration for the living pillar. Quote, "Support housing options that give people in all stages and of all economic means viable choices of safe, stable, and affordable homes." Local families are priced out of contention for the properties that are coming up on the market because deeper pockets are coming in from other areas and offering over the asking price with cash offers, no contingencies, and for properties they don't plan to live in. Now, when you look at the overall impact of this over the life of the property, who provides more economic benefit to the community? The short-term vacation rental or the families that want to move into these properties? So, the short-term vacation rental properties, typically the guests come in, they're carrying groceries, beverages, their boats are full of gas, that all of these things they bought from home, they didn't buy in the local community. Where the family that lives there, full-time, 365 days a year, buys most of their goods in the community, and they also work here, they use the bars, restaurants, medical facilities, and buy their vehicles and have them serviced here, they use the K-12 school systems and colleges and churches, the family who works here and raises the next generation of the workforce, and their family units. The next one is the other pillar, agricultural rural business. Quote, "The comprehensive plan continues to support businesses in the agricultural rural areas that do not create negative impacts on public health, safety, and general welfare of adjacent property owners." I can tell you, and I can assure you, that when a short-term rental comes into a neighborhood, it has a negative impact on the neighbors, just by the transient nature alone, not to mention if there's any violations. If these people had want to live next to a hotel, or a resort, or campground, they would have looked for property there in the first place rather than having one put on them. There's another pillar that I want here addressed, and that's for ag land, ag and rural area business uses, and we are rural out in our area. The projects owner, this is quote, "project owner or operator" lives on a site. This pillar doesn't seem to get addressed. It's one of the considerations, and it is addressed in Rockville's short-term vacation rental ordinance. The next thing I'd like to address is saturation, because there doesn't seem to be any concern for it, and I don't see where there's any restrictions on it. I'd like to show you a photo of the Channel Lakes, Stock River and Channel Lakes, for those of you that aren't real familiar. And I'd like to focus in on this little area right here. I've got another diagram that can give you an example of what it's, what we're talking about here. So, here's that little circle. Again, there's 18 properties. In the last year, four of them have come up for sale, each one wanting to address, are interested in short-term vacation rentals. As a matter of fact, some of the buyers that were there, once they found out there was a moratorium, decided not to even make an offer. There was another property where the owner was interested in possibly being a short-term vacation rentals. So, the potential lay there, had it not been for the moratorium, that five of these 18 properties could have been short-term vacation rentals. Now, what would that do to the neighborhood? You stop and think about that. My third point is this. Why are short-term vacation rentals not allowed in Sartell? Some of the decision-makers and staff member around here live there. Isn't that, you know, we don't need them in our neighborhood, but they're good for years? In summary, I'd just like to say, we can promote tourism through our resorts, campgrounds, motels, et cetera, not by bastardizing our neighborhoods. If banning totally is not an option, put restrictions on saturation to preserve our neighborhoods. And some options are by banning them in shoreland overlay districts, or perhaps one every mile of road, or 100 acres of waterway, or that the property has to be homesteaded, and there's other options available, some of the other districts have used, they have some control over this. So, right now, you're in a position to do something about this, to make the right decisions by revising the ordinance to protect the residents of Stearns County in this wave of short-term vacation rentals that is taking over, going to take over our area and other parts of the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at the Public Access Forum? Seeing no one else, we'll conclude that portion. Next item is the Consent Agenda. There's 15 items. We can either look for a motion to approve, or if anybody has a question or needs anything pulled. Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will recess our regular meeting at this time and open the Human Services Board Meeting. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Becky Bales-Cramlett here. I'm filling in for Melissa Huberty for our two items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today. I'd like to talk about, the first item is D1 on page 99 of your packet. This is the Community Living Infrastructure Grant. This really helps individuals that are homeless or at risk of being homeless, and we know that by servicing these individuals, they can be more productive citizens in our society. And it also helps in the future for their children and family being stable and have productive lives. We do know that individuals that are homeless are using our emergency room and our detox facility at a high rate, which are very high-end costs. And again, investing this money in the individuals that need this service, we can hopefully reduce costs in the future and also have better outcomes for them and their health and their safety. And the second item is on D2, page 101. It's claims paid on behalf of the Human Services clients. So, I stand for any questions today.
Anyone have questions for Becky? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Human Services Consent Agenda items.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. We have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Becky.
Becky? I got a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner Persky.
I was going to wait for issues by Commissioner, but yesterday at the AMC meeting, while they were presenting, they were looking at a new program that's actually put out by AmeriCorps, and it's going to be a five-year program, and it's offering full-time positions for the cost of $5,000 on the municipal side, so we could get a full-time equivalent somewhere in the area of human services.
Okay.
So, thinking about the needs we have in human services, just off the top of my head, between human trafficking, between homelessness, you know, we have the outpost here in St. Cloud, you know, Terabinth, you know, there's a possibility for maybe picking up a staff member to help in that area. So, we'll get the information and maybe see if that's something we can use.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'll bring it back to our Administrator Melissa Huberty. I'll take all the credit for it.
Okay, absolutely.
Well, and I think it has to be a new, you can't, it has to be a new titled position.
And only particular kinds, because these are AmeriCorps volunteers. They're great, it's great programs, it's an extension of things that already exist that hopefully we're taking advantage of, but it's worth looking into.
Yeah, and she's, she's mentioned there's a good number of positions available, or they have availability to fill those positions. So, we got, I know we have need.
We do.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think there was over 50 that unfilled.
Yeah.
They had 110 signed up, and not even half, I think, are.
I'll see if I can get that information to you today.
Thank you, that'd be terrific. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Okay, with that, we'll close the Human Services Board Meeting and reconvene our regular meeting with Environmental Services.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shelley.
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Only one item on the agenda for us today, so that just means be prepared for the next meeting. We have a four-lot residential plat in Eden Lake Township that needs to be approved, and it has been unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, and they have fulfilled all the requirements that had to be done, such as a subdivision agreement, we've got declaration of restriction, all our documents are done, water supply verification, and ingress and egress utility easement. So, everything has been in compliance and is available for signing if you approve.
Can anybody have questions for Shelley on this item? If not, we'd be looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I have nothing else unless you guys have something for me.
Anybody have anything for Shelley?
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. All right, next up is Public Works with Jody.
Good morning, Jody Tyke County Engineer. My item today, I'm asking the Board to set a public hearing to extend the 1/4% local option transportation sales tax by five years. And before we get into this, we did have a whole series of public input options. Attendance was, I don't want to call it abysmal, but it was very low.
Negligible?
But the attendance we did have was good, and I know Commissioner Notch mentioned this once before, too, and so did Commissioner Lenzmeyer. When you only have one or two people, the conversation is very open. Our commentary did range from, you know, people just don't like taxes in general, and who can blame them, and to, okay, well, it's okay, I don't like it, but you've done good things. I think I mentioned before, we did have a couple of comments about going to 5%, but if those people work in the road industry, I don't know that their opinion actually counts. So, based on some of the comments we received, you know, we talked about 10 years versus five years, and I did hear overwhelmingly, five years. You should definitely look at things, if you're going to do this, every five years it needs to be looked at. Don't do it further than that, because who knows what's going to change in the next five years, let alone 10 years. So, we had a series of draft programs out there, and they were all illustrative only at this point. I mean, they were realistic, but we needed to fine-tune it a little bit based on some other revenues that came in from the federal government, et cetera. So, first thing I want to start with is that I put a couple of programs up there, and I apologize that there are no maps on it, because as these got updated, every single person in our engineering department is out on a construction project, and I didn't really feel like asking them to work an additional couple hours of overtime to do mapping. So, I apologize. I'm hoping that we'll get a break in the action potentially later this week, so we can get somebody on that, so we can get maps up with these. Our website would be updated if the Board would approve my recommendation today. You will note, in both the base program, which is where the 1/4% sales tax sunsets at the end of this year, so that's the base program, in both the base program and the program that shows the 1/4% sales tax being extended, 2023 is the exact same, and that's primarily because we need some time to gear up with the staff that we have, even hiring consultants, you need a little bit of time to gear up for that. And so, the five years of collections would actually be spent in the last four years of the road program. Again, these are still preliminary, and I know Commissioner Mergan had passed on a comment from one of his constituents to me today, and so we'll see if we can modify this very slightly, but we'll take a look at that. And if you approve setting a public hearing, that does not mean you are in favor of extending this local option sales tax right now. It's merely that you're ready to take official, very much on the record, public comment about the 1/4% sales tax. The hearing I am proposing would be at the July 19th Board Meeting. If you feel that that's coming up too quick and in the midst of summer, we can certainly push it to the first meeting in August if that's what you prefer, but I would recommend July 19th, so it kind of goes along with our budget process. Again, 2023, the road program is going to be very much the same, anyway. It's just that we would be able to start using some of those 2023 revenues toward engineering on the sales tax projects that are in the years after 2023. So, I don't know if you have any questions or comments in general, but that's a general overview. I know a couple of you have been at some of the meetings and heard some of the comment, but a little, you know, there were some comments on social media as well, and I did get a few emails and phone calls, and one of the things I did hear is do not increase it to 1/2%. That's another comment that was pretty common.
Anybody have any questions for Jody, or problems with the date chosen? Commissioner Persky?
Jody, the decision between the five and 10-year, we'll make that later, then?
Well, that would be made at the public hearing. As part of that, the other decision would need to be made, and I can certainly bring multiple resolutions for the public hearing to be considered. If we looked at 10 years, we would either need to have a 10-year program, so we could designate all of those projects, or we would need to identify all roads that could need improvement in those 10 years. I think the general public likes the very specific process that this Board does. I know a lot of county Boards simply identify any road that could possibly need improvement. They have done 10-year. Some counties have done longer than 10-year resolutions. I think the residents of Stearns County, from what I've heard, they appreciate the transparency, they see the exact projects, they know that those engineering costs on those projects are the only staff costs that can be covered by the sales tax. So, they like that transparency, and they like that window where it's automatically, it has to be looked at again.
I particularly like the five-year, because I think that gives us the flexibility to make changes, as we see changes also just in perhaps funding for certain projects in, close to the project we want to complete, which would make a change. And so, I guess I would be advocating for the five years.
One other comment I would make, I had mentioned in an update to the Board that we are looking at using a portion of our wheelage tax to help some of our increasing maintenance costs. I've told you all that materials costs have gone up significantly since the first of the year, and it's not that we can simply quit plowing snow because we are out of money for fuel, and that budget item, as an extreme example. So, we are trying to come up with some additional money to help cover maintenance without having an even more significant increase in what our requested levy allotment would be for 2023. And so, we have cut back a little bit on those wheelage tax projects as well, taking a certain amount of that and putting it towards very specific maintenance projects. So, we would still be able to tell the general public exactly what we're using that wheelage tax for, it's just that it would be in our maintenance as opposed to in a construction project. It may be a striping contract, it may be contractor culvert replacements in the future, something to that effect. So, that certainly impacts our road construction program as well. And so, looking at all of that and trying to balance everything within our budget request, that's why I'm coming forward with, normally I would come forward and say, tell me what you want me to move forward with, and in this case, I am strongly recommending the 1/4% for five years only, so.
Mr. Chair, I move that we set the public hearing for July?
July 19th.
19th.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clark. Second by Commissioner Mergan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm waiting to, something when you get done with.
I do have one miscellaneous item I'll cover really quickly. For anyone who is interested, tonight at 5 o'clock, or from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., at Sartell City Hall, we have a public open house related to a study we are doing regarding the County Road 133 alignment. There is an area where there's a gap in our County Road 133, and so, the APO, we were awarded federal planning funds to study whether we should even continue considering that alignment connection, and if so, where that should go. And so, SRF Consulting Group is the lead consultant on that contract, and we are having our first open house tonight to get public input on several options. So, if anybody is interested, Sartell City Hall, it starts at 5 o'clock. A brief presentation will be made at 5:30 tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Just quickly, thank you for your participation in urging a special session. As usual, you did a fabulous job outlining what's at stake in certainly the area of transportation, and I think that we'll keep going back and revisiting this and saying out loud over and over until hopefully some action happens, because we don't want to lose any opportunity for those federal dollars, or opportunities like capturing the sales tax on auto parts for transportation. So, thank you, thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome. Commissioner Clark is referring, I represented both AMC and the Minnesota County Engineers Association at a media event urging a special session focused on transportation. That was our message, and there were city representatives, labor was represented, associations from across the state. So, it was, I think it was a good event. I don't know where it will go from here, but that was the focus of it. And we focused on the local road improvement program, the local bridge replacement program, local wetland replacement program, and then, of course, just some of those bonding projects.
Commissioner Persky?
Thank you for that, Jody. This past week, the APO sent a letter of support for a special session relating to transportation. 7W sent a letter of support, and we talked about it yesterday at the AMC meeting as well, so, you know, to me, it would be basically neglect in transportation if we don't get something settled, anyway.
Okay, Commissioner Mergan?
This is a different subject, Jody. I was just wondering if you had any inside baseball knowledge on the Highway 23 Project, County Road 43? They were diverting the creek there with these culverts, all of it, and they had it almost finished, and all of a sudden, they tore them all back out and started over again?
I have not heard anything on that. So, they have a temporary diversion system set up to replace that large culvert that's under 43 that we had asked them to do as part of this, and I'm not sure, I can certainly check with the project manager and get back to you on that.
I just thought maybe you would know why, but it was almost completed, and then they tore all of them out.
I'll check with the project manager and follow up with you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further for Jody? If not, thanks, Jody.
Great, thank you.
I just maybe have one clarification, I don't know if it's in my packet, but F1 was actually, I think, on the consent agenda, that performance measure? I just happened to notice what we're going through toward the end here.
I did, Commissioner Notch, I did notice that, I don't know.
Okay, but as long, it's all in, everything was in there for the consent, but it was on a different page.
Right, yeah. And then, as long as you mention that, you know, that's just the state program. We'll bring to you all of our performance measures during the budget process, so there's only a few for the state program, and that gives us a little bit of money. But, yeah, I don't know how that happened.
I just noticed that when it was supposed to be Public Works and all, and there's Administration. All right, you're up, Mr. Williams.
I put a map in front of you, but it is there, too, and so, I don't know that really asking for any action today, because, because we, I guess we're just not ready for that. And I was hoping we would be, but this map shows you the townships that are participating in the project, so you can see that the ARVIC, the ARVIC proposal, it was in two pieces, and so, this piece, we have full participation, the Albany, the northeast portion has full participation. When we do get to this far northwest and southwest, we'll have nearly full participation. We have some no's and some question marks in this southern, south-central, and that's why I don't have the financial plan totally pulled together. I think, I would predict St. Martin is going to not participate, and the same with Collegeville. Collegeville is a little unique, they actually have better service in some of these areas than what our state maps are showing, and so, we're trying to sort through some of that and see if they want to participate or not. And Collegeville includes part of, part of two proposals, one here, and then this little spot here. And so, the numbers for that northeast Phase 1 and that south section are probably, are definitely, without Collegeville, without some of these other townships, they will change. But we do have, as you can see, good participation from the townships. And then, the finance part, and I would, I put this in front of you in paper, too, but if you look right here on that, you can see that, that we're going to anticipate applying for border-to-border grant in five, for $5 million for the, for the central and northwest portion, and then, at least one point, or somewhere in the neighborhood, 1.6 for the Phase 1 of the northeast section. That grant process is open now, and we need to have those in by, I think it's August 4th, but it's the beginning of August. And so, we're working to come to agreements with these providers. And then, you can see that in this column is what we were talking about for county costs. Now, again, these should go down somewhat if we get some new numbers here, but that would be almost, well, $9.9 million in the county cost for this Phase 1, but we do still have $5 million remaining for Phase 2 somewhere. I mean, those numbers are, some are estimates, plus we're showing 1.1 million, so really another $6 million for Phase 2, if all goes well with the border-to-border grant. The last number here is just because with the ARVIC, two proposals, we would combine those for a border-to-border grant. And so, you can see that we're keeping the state participation in these, trying to keep the state participation low, because we get more points on the border-to-border grants if we keep the state participation particularly below 30%. And that far northwest, I think, and the state recognizes this with their program, that those very low-density areas are going to require more, but I think we'll be able to keep that at 50%, which is the threshold today, but I think that's going to, it is going to increase. So, where we are in the process now, what I, what I'd hope to have is, you know, you've already authorized me to enter into, enter into these agreements, but I wanted to run this finance plan by you, and perhaps even, you know, get a head nod that you're okay with where we're moving here. I think I'll need to do that in another two weeks, bring you kind of where we are at that point. In the meantime, we'll continue to, continue to work with the providers and get agreements in play, hopefully get agreements in place and firm up this financial plan, so there's a level of comfort where we're going, because we definitely want to have money left over for Phase 2. And, you know, it appears that if we're successful with the border-to-border, we will have ample dollars to go into the next border-to-border application and keep the state participation at. the state participation at somewhat of a low, low level. So I don't, I don't think it's a time for action. I was hoping it would be, but, but at least, at least we have time so you could get an update and ask me any questions if you have questions or comments.
So phase one would pick up almost 3,800 premises, looks like, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that, and that number would, would probably change a little bit because of some of the township participating or not. But yeah, that is, you know, that proposal is picking up, you know, geography-wise, a lot of area too, but it's going to pick up many of our unserved and underserved.
Any questions for Mike? Lee? You look puzzled.
The, just, the only, I don't have a question. The comment would be is, again, and you've heard me say, say this before, this effort reminds me so much of when I was a kid listening to supper table conversations about the development of Stearns Electric. We didn't just talk about gopher sports. I got the load on other things too.
I think at the district meeting yesterday, didn't one of them mention one of the co-ops? Was it going to be, was that Isani County?
Yeah, I think she was saying something about that, yeah.
That they, at first they asked them like five years ago and it was like, no. All of a sudden they're going to, we're going to do it.
That's exactly the experience that Dad referred to, you know, that people came on later because it made so much sense. And then in retrospect, historically, if we can, here's a measure of success for those of you that conceivably could be at this for a longer term, is that when you look back at decisions like this and you can say, well, that was an easy decision, the more sense it makes, the more likely in the long run, doesn't mean it wasn't controversial on the front end.
Yeah. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I'm, Mike, appreciate all the work on this.
Yeah.
So really hats off. How, how much money is in the well though? My concern is, you know, there's a lot of counties that are looking for this and I'm, I'm glad to think that we're on the front end of it so that at least our bucket will get filled, but you know, is, is the money going to run out? I don't know.
Commissioner Persky, I'm sure that there will be more app, you know, more, more money requested than there is in the program.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that we're poised well, to do well, I really do, because we've got the partnerships here, we've got township dollars, we've got county dollars. We're going to ask for a smaller percentage than perhaps any other programs. We're covering many premises. I, I, you know, I can't make a prediction, but we, we have strong applications.
Right. And that's why I appreciate your efforts. They look really good. So thank you.
I'll make the prediction. Success breeds success. When people see what this can do, the more that happens, the less resistance you'll get. It, either we believe in it or we don't and I just, I see nothing but opportunity here. And I don't believe, I don't, I can appreciate people's skepticism on the front end, but it, you know, years from now, you look back, oh, that was an easy decision. Well, no, but it was.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I think another, this is, we have a very strong partnership and there's also with the number of entities that are engaged, it's really very helpful. And I think it's good for us to remember that both the state just put in some more funds, just passed more funds for border-to-border, which will help us. And we're going to be teed up well for when the federal funds come in through the state, should we need them. And we may be far, because we're going to be kind of the equivalent of the shovel-ready. You know, I mean, I think that's, that's a critical piece as well. And I think that the, the effort to be also asking for the high-speed, afford the $30 piece of this ought to be attractive to the state as well, if they agree to.
Yeah. Commissioner Clark, thank you. And we will, it's part of our agreements that they need to be a part of that federal program. And, and hopefully we can even get someone to try to access some federal dollars. And I don't know what everybody else is hearing when we, I mean, it's going to be mostly counties that are making applications for these, for these funds. I don't know what anybody else is hearing, but I don't know of another county that's put this kind of dollars into a program either. So that should speak for something. And maybe you've heard some that are doing similar things, but I have not.
Yeah. Yesterday, a few of them mentioned it, but they not real, there's one other one, I think, that put a significant amount, but the other ones kind of filtered it out to other areas of their county.
And Mr. Chair, we do have some counties that are actually kind of done with what they're doing. So like Rock County, for example, or Dakota's done a bunch. So there's, there's some that are just in a different place and then we're way ahead of a number of counties and communities because of the work that's, that's been done. And that's, that's a good thing as well.
Mr. Chair, just, yeah, just, I don't know, on the news this morning coming in, I heard some of the Minneapolis schools are going at-home learning today because of the heat. Well, this will give us, in January, February, this will give us the opportunity for some of those school districts to be at home because the kids can't get to school. So I think it's, you know, a great provider for the school districts.
Sounds good. Anything else for us, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we are up to issues by commissioners. Commissioner Mergon?
I do have one thing. I just want to put in a plug for the Stearns County Historical Society. They have a fundraiser coming up June 24th. It's going to be in Coal Spring at the Ballpark. Festivities start at 5 o'clock and they're going to award the Zap Historian Award to John Dekker this year. He, 44 years of service with the Historical Society and, and he was instrumental in starting the Century Farm Program. There's a very large crowd, they're hoping to have about 2,000 people there, so that's their goal anyway. Festivity start at 5 o'clock, game, Springer's versus the Farming Flames starts at 7 o'clock. So it should be a good night.
Got my ticket.
So you'd be supportive of them by the Flames maybe losing?
That's not a prediction, Joe.
It's Friday night, June 24th.
Okay.
Yeah. Got my ticket.
Lee, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Persky?
Out of character, I have nothing.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Clark?
Gosh, it's so tempting to say nothing because then we'd be out of strait. I will say, I keep getting, you may have had some conversation yesterday at the meeting about this too, but about whether and when there'd be a special session. And honestly, it's now summer, so unless people keep hearing about it, that could be a little questionable. The good thing is a number of the committee chairs are meeting with the governor and with each other and if they can resolve some issues, that would make a difference. There's just too much at stake for our residents and for frankly, our budgets, for us to not keep bringing this up. So anybody watching, make sure you're contacting your legislators and the governor's office.
I know at AMC yesterday at the district meeting, they highly suggested that the counties even send letters to the leadership to get something done, even on behalf of the commissioners, basically. So maybe that's something we should look at doing too.
That's, that's a good idea and we may even want to consider some of the things that can go in the local papers or if you bring it up a CASM or some of those other things. The more people are hearing about it and understand, let's talk about frittering opportunities otherwise, and that's being kind.
Yeah. And I think highway funding is huge.
Exactly.
To get that across the line.
The corrections, our community corrections dollars, there's just such a huge array, the tax dollars. I mean, I, for, for residents watching, there's some property tax relief. It's huge. For people on social security, there's relief. There's, there's a number of things that will really make a difference, but if they don't get back and just finish it up and it's, can be pretty easy to, to move to the, sounding like we're bashing people for not finishing. The truth is the legislative calendar is based on 150-year-old calendar. It, it doesn't really work in modern times, but the, the effort, the goals, the commitment to doing it, they're the ones that control that. So they, they need to get some agreements and get back and get it done.
Yeah. And I think, Mike, you, yesterday, and the bullet points you gave me, just the county program aid, it was a million dollars to Stearns County, almost a million dollars to Stearns County, so.
The swing in dollars, I think, is 1.2 million.
Yeah, it's significant, yeah. We don't care if we go down, if the tax, if it does go through, we go up like 700, 800 dollars.
Maybe it's a million, but yeah.
It's a big deal and maybe there's something we could do with each of our meetings to put, just to, to share one thing or two things that would make a difference because that, that does get picked up sometimes by some of the press. I mean, there is a lot at stake and it really can make a difference for our communities and frankly, what it means in property taxes.
People's personal budgets, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
So thank you.
I have nothing, so for the good of the group, I can call this meeting adjourned.
Got it.
Thank you.